Okay.
Okey doke.
It's Grubarik on?
Uh, we hear him.
Oh.
We don't see you yet, Bill, but we can hear you. Oh. You trying to get your video going, Bill? Should we wait a second or can we start? Bill?
Bill's on mute.
Bill, you with us?
Yeah, I'm here if you can hear me, but I just can't get the video for some reason.
Okay, I guess we can go on without them. So I'll call the meeting to order. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States, America, and the Republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Roll call vote, please, Diane.
Ken Anderson.
Here.
Sue Filic.
Here.
Bill Grubarik. He's on mute.
Bill?
You're on mute, Bill. There we go.
Did you hear me now?
Yep. All right. Chris Mondy is absent. Pat Schuberg.
Here.
Matt Wilson.
Here.
Jeff Walter.
Here. Under public comment, I've got two for tonight that I will read. The first is an email from Julie Childress. Says, "Good evening. Good evening, Elburn Village officials. I wanted to publicly thank all of you for the discussion on possible village boundaries and potential boundary agreements conducted in the December 21st, 2020 Cow Meeting." This is the right one, right, John?
Yes.
Okay. "I appreciate that all of you have taken the time and made the effort to gather information and hold an informed discussion on what is best for Elburn, as well as surrounding communities. Each person who spoke made well thought out comments about Elburn's growth and what best reflects the wants and needs of the community. It has been pointed out that in previous meetings when I have made public comment that I may not be an Elburn resident, and that is a true statement. However, I am affected by the decisions of the Village of Elburn, as well as other local communities, as I live in the expansion area that is being discussed, and specifically in very close proximity to the Crown property. Whatever boundaries that are made will affect my home and family directly, which is why I have been so vocal on the issue. Please bear in mind, there are many families, homes, and farms in the area whose day-to-day life and even ability to earn a living will be affected by the boundary annexation decisions made by all of you. We too love our communities, neighborhoods, and our way of life, and want to be heard when it comes to decisions affecting our homes and families. We may not currently be residents of your village, however, we may become residents in the future, depending on the boundaries that are set. We are asking you for our concerns. We are asking for our concerns and point of view heard and thoroughly considered during your process. Again, thank you for taking the concerns of all the communities in the area into considerations while setting boundary expectations and boundary agreements with other municipalities. Your efforts and attention to this process are greatly appreciated. Best regards, Judy Childress." That email was sent on Monday, January 4th at 1:47. And since our last meeting, just as an update for the board, John and I met with Sugar Grove's Village President and Administrator and have started discussions. I'm not going to say it went great, but it went. They have ideas of what we're interested in. We have ideas of what they're interested in. And on our next meeting, we'll probably take that down a little further down the road. But nothing really to report yet, other than we've had our first, our latest discussion last week. Then I have another public comment. 235, or was there? No, it was one right after. All right, here we go. This is from Kathy Malinaske. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. To the Committee, the whole meeting, or now, I guess. "I'm writing in regards to the safety of the ponds located in Elburn subdivisions. I have researched the restraints and laws of the homeowners associations, schools, and police fire departments, as well as current fishing laws ahead of this request. My concern began after encountering an unsafe situation last winter while walking by the pond near Blackberry Creek's Elliot Park. I noticed three children were on or near the unfrozen pond. I didn't have a cellphone with me at that time, and there was absolutely no one else around. I told the kids to get off the ice, which they did, but it was extremely dangerous and scary situation. Sergeant Jeff Hare has mentioned that the Police Department continues to either receive complaints regarding people on the ponds or officers having to take children home because they were on a pond. People have posted on the Blackberry Creek website that it's okay to skate on the ponds because there are no HOA rules or regulations. There appears to be confusion about the use of the ponds. Should a policy be enacted to prevent a tragedy or litigation from shouldn't a, no, should a policy be enacted to prevent a tragedy or litigation from happening? Such a change in policy, I believe, would also provide helpful consistency and clarity on the usage of the ponds. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Kathleen Malinaske. She is a resident of Elburn." Do we have that on the Cow tonight, John?
No.
No. Okay, well, I'm going to write that down as other business, so we can get a quick feel for the Board's views on ponds. Thought we put that one on. All right. Any other public comment, John?
No, that's all I've received.
Okay. I need then a motion to approve the omnibus agenda, which for this evening includes the Village Board minutes of January 4th, the Committee of the Whole minutes of January 4th, and the Executive Session minutes of January 4th.
Anderson moves.
Moved by Trustee Anderson, second.
A second.
Second by Trustee Schuber. Roll call vote, or any discussion on the omnibus agenda? If not, roll call vote, please, Diane.
Ken Anderson.
Hi.
Sue Filic. Bill Grubarik.
Oh, you're.
Did you hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
I think that okay from Trustee Grubarik was a, was an aye, so we'll go with motion carries.
That's, that's yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Under Mayor, just a couple of quick things. We got a letter from the Lions Club, actually, a month or so ago that I keep forgetting to mention, but it was a thank you note for some of the things the village has done, particularly Public Works for the Lions Club over the last year. And also, just a quick note, I attended the Chamber Meeting, which was very sparsely attended. Not a lot going on there. They do plan to have their annual dinner again, although there's no plans. You know, thanks to the village, they called us out for storing their lights. Looks like they're going to come down February the 7th, I believe, is the date that was mentioned. So we should see the building lights coming down by the same company that put them up, and I, Phil's not here, but I think we're going to store them again, as far as I know. So that's all I have. Under Mayor, Village Attorney, Bill?
Just a brief heads up that I'm sure most of, if not all of us, are aware that last week on January 13th, the General Assembly passed the Criminal Justice Reform Omnibus Legislation. That, to my knowledge, that's currently sitting on the Governor's Desk. The, the bet is that he will sign it. And if he does sign it, the act takes effect generally on July of this year, but there are other provisions within the act that would take effect later dates. So not going into great detail of it, since it's not law right now, but there are some significant, significant actions required in this to obviously, police and the justice system. One of the big obligations that the village will have, if this is signed by the Governor, is the requirement for every officer to employ body cameras. The requirement that that be utilized is, is based upon population of municipalities. And for municipalities with a population under $50,000, 50,000 residents, that obligation kicks in January 1st of 2025. So obviously, what comes along with that legislation becomes a significant cost to ensure that all of your police officers will be equipped with, with body cameras. One of the other big aspects of this legislation that's being talked about is the elimination of cash bail. And for what will be now called as a pre-trial release will now completely eliminate the idea of a monetary bail system for individuals charged with crimes. And wondering what effect that will have on the general public when they've got individuals charged with crimes who are probably no longer held in detention, waiting, waiting for trial associated with that. So there's a, this is a 600, 700-page bill that takes a significant amount of time to digest. And various organizations, both Municipal League and police affiliated are creating some summaries, but again, it's, it's everybody's best guess right now that the Governor will sign this. And there'll, there'll be just a limited couple of months headway before any of those details within the legislation takes effect July 1st. And if that does take effect, perhaps we'll have more detailed discussion about the effect of those changes on the village. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does anybody have anything for the Village Attorney? If not, we'll move on to Village Clerk, Diane.
No report.
Anybody have anything for Diane? All right, Village Engineer, I believe she's on there somewhere.
I am.
Where's Julie?
No report. No report tonight.
All right. Anybody have anything for the Village Engineer? Moving on to Administration, John?
I actually have two things tonight. One, you'll notice that Public Works, Phil Van Bogart, is not on the call tonight. He is taking care of some, shall I say, some family business out of state, having to do with a broken car. So I will be playing the role of Public Works a little bit later on in this agenda as well. And on the agenda, we have discussed and approved a final plat of subdivision for Fox Point or Nar. This went to Plan and Commission next week. And it was approved unanimously and is recommended for Board approval. And we also have, on this call, we've got Rick Murphy from Nar. We've got Pat Griffith, the attorney. We've got a couple of engineers, Paige and Madeline from Mackey, which is the Nar engineers.
All right, do I have a motion then to approve the final plat of subdivision for Fox Point?
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Trustee Wilson. Do I have a second?
I'll move it.
Second by Trustee Schuber. Any discussion on the final plat of subdivision for Fox Point? I have one question, John. I know I gave it to you via email, but I think the Board would want to hear it as well. Where do the street names come from?
I got the street names as directed off of the monuments over on the Veterans Memorial. Or locally sourced one way or another, but Nar was given a list of about 12 or 13 names, and I think they only needed eight or nine, and that's what, what they chose.
Okay, so these are all Elburn folks who.
One way or the other.
Yep, serve their country. Any other discussion on the final plat? Any questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Ken Anderson.
Hi.
Sue Filic.
Aye.
Bill Grubarik.
Aye.
Pat Schuber.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Nar, welcome to Elburn once again. Look forward to breaking ground. Rick, you got a date for groundbreaking yet?
Soon as the weather breaks and looks dry enough to work, we really are excited to get going and become a proud part of the Village of Elburn. It's been a real pleasure working with everybody from, you know, Mayor, Village Board, Plan and Commission, Administration, Engineering, Village Attorney, all the way up and down the line. We really appreciate a relationship with you. Thank you.
Excellent. Pat, anything to add?
That's it. Happy New Year, everybody. And again, thanks for the smooth process, as Rick said.
All right. Anything from the engineers?
No, thank you very much.
All right, we look forward to working with everybody and look forward to the groundbreaking. Thank you all. Congratulations. All right, anything else, John?
That is it for right now.
All right, anything for John? We'll move on to building and zoning.
Nothing till the next meeting.
All right, anything for Tom? Doug, Finance?
We've got a few items on the list tonight. The first is the Treasurer's Report for December. December is the eighth month of the fiscal year, so we're at the 67% mark of the year. The top part of the report shows the ending balance by fund. And then the bottom half of the report shows the cash balances by bank account. So are there any questions about the Treasurer's Report for December? All right, item B is the Revenue and Expense Report, also for December. I might point out that we're in the process of revising the current year's budget, which will be the next item we talk about. So the Revenue and Expenditure Report you're looking at does not yet reflect the revised budget, should it, should it pass later tonight. So just, just keep that in mind. So the other point I want to make is that we're, we're at the two-thirds mark of the year, so we're at 67%. For the, for the most part, we're, we're doing well. Our, our department heads do a good job of managing their individual departmental budgets. Are there any questions on the Revenue and Expenditure Report? All right, the next item then is Ordinance 2021-01. What this does is it revises the current year's budget. And we reviewed this at some length at the last meeting, at the last committee of the whole meeting on January the 4th. What you see in this ordinance is the same as what we looked at at the last meeting, except for the following. There's been a few changes since then, and I will point those out to you. If you'll turn to page. I'll find it here in a second. Turn to page nine, it's the Water Department. So it's a count. I'll give you a second to get there. It's a count 30-42-511. It's Maintenance Service Building. At the last meeting, that number was 13,500. Since that time, we've upped that number to 21,000. And then we're, we're comfortable, more, more comfortable with 21,000 than what we were with 13,500. So originally, we weren't going to change that, but it, in the interim, we felt that we needed to bump that up a little bit. So that's one change. Another change is on page 14. It's the Fund 56 Recreation Fund. So Fund 56 Recreation Fund. We had a few changes in there last time on the revenue side. And we were contemplating changes on the expenditure side. It's been decided to make no changes to this fund. So so nothing in this fund will be changed budget-wise. I will point out, though, that if if we operate this budget the way it is right now, we will be overdrawn in this fund at the end of the fiscal year. So e- even though the budget expenditures are not being changed, we'll have to make every effort to not use the entire budget, the entire budgeted expenditures. Otherwise, we will be overdrawn in that fund, and that's, that's not a good thing. So so we're not formally making any changes to the budget. So the budget as it stands is a deficit budget. So those who govern the expenditures in this fund will have to very closely watch that so as not to expend more than what we have in revenue and reserve in that fund. So that's Fund 56, the Recreation Fund. If you'll turn to page 16, which is Fund 63, the commuter parking fund, or, or what we call the Metro Fund. A couple of changes there on the expenditure side. Line 6363412. Last time, we had upped that to 14,000. We have now changed it back to 7,000. So we've reduced that from what we had it at in our last discussion. And then if you'll go down to line 539, 6363539, commuter fare service. We, we did have that at 46,500. That has since been reduced to 10,500. So we're, we're doing what we can to limit our expenditures in this fund, because, well, and we've talked about this before, our, our revenues are down significantly in this fund, because we don't have nearly as many commuters parking out there and paying the parking fee. So revenues are down, and we're adjusting expenditures to, to help make up for that. But I will, I will point out, if you look at the bottom of that page, all the way to the right, where it shows beginning cash balance and ending cash balance, our ending cash balance, we won't be in the hole, but our cash balance is going to be cut, almost cut in half by the end of this fiscal year. So we're probably going to have to make some tough decisions, even in, in next year's budget for this, for this fund.
Doug, we can transfer money from the General Fund into this, right? It can always be from sales of parking.
No, this, this is an enterprise fund. It has, it has to stand on its own. All right, tho- those are the changes from what we discussed at the last meeting. Are there any questions about any of that?
Can we go back to discuss about the Parking Fund? I, I know it sounds like reading what John had put together, there's something going on with the Metro. But they're looking to hopefully get ridership up. I don't know if that really helps us in our issue. Is, is this something to be discussed for next, next year's budget? Because we have $107,000 left. Total expenditures are 102 or 103.
Yeah, I think, I think that discussion comes with next year's budget. What are we going to cut? What are we not going to do? What are we going to close? What are we going to keep open? I mean, I think, you know, staff has made a lot of decisions already between police and Public Works. You know, closing down half the lot. For this year, I'm not sure there's a whole lot more we can do.
Right, so we're, we're going to talk about it at.
Well, a couple of the other things that, that I can share with you is, one, obviously, a couple of our large expenses in the in the fund is the grounds maintenance. We've shut off a huge portion of the parking lot that we're not going to plow. So we should be saving money this year as far as for snowplow. Most of the landscaping won't happen until we start the new fiscal year. We're taking a look at the way that we allocate salaries out of that fund as well, trying to shift from a percentage to actual time that is spent out there. We're spending less time out there collecting fares fees for parking, because there's not, not as many people. We've cut down on the amount of, or the rent or the lease sniff, which is the best way to put that, on that West Pay Station. We've deactivated that one as well, because we're not, we don't have cars parking out there. So we've taken a look at it and cut as much as we think we should right now. Hopefully, in another couple of months, we'll start to see a trend line going back up. In my discussions with our Metro rep, one of the things that, that we discussed was some assistance from Metro. I'm going to be vague about that, because it's in the ask portion of it right now, that they may be willing to help augment this fund, but I, I don't want to put anything out there, because I don't know where it's going to lead just yet. But we've asked.
Thank you.
All right, then, do I have a motion to approve Ordinance 2021-01, the revised FY 21 Budget?
I'll move it.
Moved by Trustee Schuber, second.
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Filic. Any further discussion on 2021-01? Roll call vote, please.
Ken Anderson.
Hi.
Sue Filic.
Aye.
Bill Grubarik.
Aye.
Pat Schuber.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else, Doug?
It's all I have.
Anybody have anything for Doug? All right, we'll move on to Police then. Chief?
Just one quick update for this meeting. Police Commission will be meeting this Thursday night to review background packets on the first several candidates for our one open full-time officer slot. We do have an Academy slot guaranteed for March, so we are trying to get everything done ahead of that, to make sure we have a candidate available for that March slot that we have. So that's it for this meeting. Unless anybody else has any questions for me, more in the Cow Meeting.
Anything for the Chief? All right, Public Works, John?
We have a resolution to support the removal of Fox River Dams. This is something that is part of the, the Fox River Study Group. And we're just trying to urge the Army Corps of Engineers to speed up their process.
All right, do I have a motion then to approve Resolution 2021-04, Support for the Removal of Fox River Dams?
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Trustee Wilson, second.
I'll move. I'll second it.
Second by Trustee Grubarik. Any discussion on our resolution to support the removal of the Fox River Dams?
I, can I just make a comment that the Forest Preserve is in the process. We received funding from the IDNR to remove the Carpenter's Field Dam. It's a dam that the Forest Preserve owns. And we are in the design and permitting stage of that process. So hopefully, in 2022, there may be one less dam on the Fox River.
Great. And it sounds like this, I think this resolution is supported by all the Mayors up and down the river, from what I've seen from emails and such, so. All right, any other discussion on the, the resolution? All right, any other discussion on the, the resolution? Roll call vote, please.
Ken Anderson.
Hi.
Sue Filek.
Hi.
Bill Graberek.
Hi.
Pat Schuberg.
Hi.
Matt Wilson.
Hi.
Motion carries. Any other Public Works, John, for this meeting?
Uh, not at the moment.
All right, Bill, the bills list?
Uh, Mayor, yeah, while you can't see my face, which is probably, you know, uh. Fortunate. I've reviewed the, the bills list for this day and found everything to be in order. There is this one substantial one, which is out of the rec. Uh. Uh. Fund. Uh, but uh. Anyway, consequently, I would move to approve said bills list in the amount of. Five hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety one dollars and twenty cents. Of which the big one is of course, the uh, two hundred and almost sixty thousand dollars. Uh, for the rec fund, which we will be getting hopefully reimbursements from. Some folks on that one.
Yes. So then we'll be paying their portion and I believe that Lake Berry Township still has a uh, small portion of their commitment left.
Okay.
All right, motion by trustee Graberek to have a second.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Schuberg. Any discussion on the bills list?
Again, with that one media change, we, you know, we had almost eighty nine thousand bucks. On uh, on wealth free. Which was a little unexpected, I guess.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Ken Anderson.
Hi.
Sue Filek.
Hi.
Bill Graberek.
Hi.
Pat Schuberg.
Hi.
Matt Wilson.
Hi.
She carries. Any other business to come before the board? Have a motion to adjourn?
No, wait a moment. I'd like to speak. I'm sorry, I. Got, uh, I had a hard time getting on the computer. My name is Casey Baron. I talked to uh. John and Jeff in regards to an issue.
Yes, sir. We were expecting a public comment, but go ahead. We'll, we'll back her up a bit. Go for it.
Could I go for it?
Yes, please do.
Thank you. Good evening, uh. Village trustees, vice uh, village president. And village administrator and others. My name is Casey Baron and my wife's name is Kathy. We're both seniors and I'm a veteran. We moved to Elburn the uh, April of uh, last year and uh, it was a new home. It's in the Shodin. Uh, vicinity. My purpose here. Is the sewer. Surcharge or the overcharge I was made when I was watering the lawn. It was quite considerable. Normally. The uh. The normal unit used. For people, you know, for two people, elderly people is four, based on your calculations and your. Measurements. This is also, uh, I, I guess Joanne was also mentioned that, you know, four units. However. When we were watering the lawn, we were quite. Over that. Your only means of uh. Measuring water sewage, uh, the sewage is by a water consumption. Uh, so. That's a misnomer because you can't. Obviously, uh. Measure both at the same time because during the summertime, a lot of people use water for pools. Lawn and all the other stuff. Uh, other, I called other villages in the vicinity and they have uh. Measurements that they use formulas and everything else. And uh. I've mentioned to uh, John and Jeff, uh, one of the formulas and uh. That should apply in our cases. Based on my calculations. I was overcharged by seven hundred and twenty seven dollars. That's all.
So you're asking for relief for the seven hundred dollars? Uh, I, what, what do you, I, I, I understand you're asking us to consider the way we. You know, from our conversation, the way we actually bill sewage, which will be a, a cow agenda item. Uh, for the next cow, not tonight, but the next one, uh, we'll discuss that. But are you asking for some relief? For yourself or payment plan or what, what are you asking us for?
No, I'm asking for a refund.
Okay, board, that's a board decision, certainly one I can't make on my own. It's up to the board to uh. Hear the facts and decide what uh. What plan you want to uh, put into place uh, for that refund or or whatever. So. We'll open it up for comments and uh. When everyone's had a chance to comment, we'll. Take a, a quick poll for a decision. Uh, who wants to go first?
I, I, I'll go first, trustee Anderson. I know we've had. Other situations similar to this, uh, I recall. It's been a period of time since we had, but I recall. Uh, we've offered payment plans, um, but I'm not sure we have. In the past with um, reduced. Hopefully the other board members can tell me the same or.
But that's my recollection also, Ken. I know that we've, um, I think it was. Last year, we looked heavily at some of our, our um. Our water rates and we, we had long discussions on uh, sod. Watering for sod during the summer. Uh, I'm trying to recall what some of the outcome of that was. If we talked about putting in or offering a special meter for homeowners who are watering sod. Uh, just to keep track of what water was going through hoses instead of household use. I know that we've, uh, traditionally, we have done payment plan relief. Um. You know, over, over long periods of time. I, I don't remember that we have. Um. That we've reduced. Cost. Or charges.
Okay, um, we'll just go down the line here, see if there's any additional comments. Sue?
Yeah, you know, I remember this in the past too. I don't remember us ever doing a financial relief of it. Um. I, I understand it. I haven't had to water a lawn in a long time, but I have a pool. So. We fill a pool and and we pay, it's a big water bill when we fill it each summer. Um, so we prepare ourselves for that.
And Matt?
Yeah. I mean. I remember all the discussions about additional meters. Um. I don't know the timing of the sod, but I'm sure depending on the time of year. Um. I mean, it's going to cost quite a bit to water. Um. And the water is used, being a water guy. I'm a water conservationist myself, so. Um. If you want green grass in the summer, I mean, it comes at a cost.
All right, sounds like the, Pat, just some to add?
Can, can I add one more thing here, Jeff?
Yeah, sure.
You know, one of the other things I remember is when we were talking about. Um, new homes and sod permits and watering. One of the other things I, I think I remember and correct me, board, if I'm, if I have this wrong. I thought we also encouraged um, Shodin as a developer to be more forthright with. Um, new residents coming in to, you know, for help and advice on um. Encouraging, you know, water conservation or encouraging um, use that. We heard from different people that there was kind of a, a misunderstanding or miscommunication about how much to water or how often. That sometimes led people to use more than they needed to do. I don't know that this is. Um, Mr. Baron, I don't know that this is the case, but I just remembered that we also talked about encouraging developers. Um. To work with homeowners and, and what the expectations or what they should be doing for installing a, a lawn. I don't know if that's. If that's something that we can go back and encourage, especially if more homes will be coming in the summer and we'll begin. Looking at more um, grass growing season.
John, could you brief the board on the uh, new homeowners letter that we send out now?
Sure, and and Pat, it was part of uh, you know, we did communicate that primarily with Shodin because they were the uh, the one that was building the most homes. Uh, since the last time that we've talked about this. Um, obviously, we can't verify whether or not they tell that to their new customers or new home purchasers or not. Uh, but one of the things that we can do and have been doing is that as people come in to set up or make contact to set up through. Their water accounts. Is that we will send out a letter uh, talking about sod and how often you should. How often it should be water. And uh. You know, sometimes people listen and sometimes they don't. Uh, sometimes they read the letter and sometimes they don't. So, but uh. We, we do make sure that we try to, or that we send out that letter um, along with other information about the village. So. And that was done in this case.
Okay, thank you.
Could I say something? You're talking about the water. I'm not talking about the water. I'm talking about the sewer charge. Not the water charge. I have no issue with her. Whatever I use, I, I'll pay for, but. It's the sewers I'm talking about. That's the charge, not the water charge.
Okay.
Right. All right, so board, it sounds like the board is willing to offer a payment plan if, if uh, Mr. Baron would like that. Other than that, there doesn't sound like there's any other relief.
What do you mean payment plan? What does that mean until?
John, you want to take that?
I believe that uh, a payment plan was offered to Mr. Baron back uh, last summer. And uh, Mr. Baron, correct me if I'm wrong, but you've already completed that payment plan and you're here tonight looking for. A refund for what you've paid for on the sewer side.
Correct. It's our, I have no outstanding balance.
Gotcha. And the board does not sound like they're willing to do a refund. Correct me if I'm wrong, board, did I state that correctly? Yep, everyone's nodding their head up and down. So unfortunately, Mr. Baron, uh, it looks like the board is not willing to uh, to do the relief. For, for you on that.
Could I say one thing? My recourse is I'll be getting in touch with one of the networks. And investigative reporting and uh, hopefully one of them will take it up because you're stealing money from us. You stole over seven hundred dollars from me, so please keep in mind, again, I'm a senior and I'm a veteran. So uh, I'm sure that has a little weight. And it's sad. Because you're stealing money, pure and simple. No excuses. You could come up with a plan other villages have. And you haven't. So I'm very disappointed that I have to go the next step. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, sir. Thank you. And you've got my number. Feel free to give it to them.
I will.
All right, any other business to come before the board? Do I have a motion then to adjourn?
I'll move it.
Move by trustee Filek, second?
I'll second it.
I'll second.
By trustee Schuberg, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. I will call the committee to hold the order at seven forty five P M. Roll call, please, Diane.
Ken Anderson.
Here.
Sue Filek.
Here.
Bill Graberek.
Here.
Chris Mondy is absent. Pat Schuberg.
Here.
Matt Wilson.
Here.
Jeff Walter.
I am here. Uh, the public comment I read earlier, I think, was actually meant for this meeting regarding the pond, so we'll take that up under other business. Any other public comment? Come in, John?
No.
Anyone on the meeting have any public comment?
Uh, I'd like to say thank you for letting me join here. This was for a Boy Scout. Merit badge. And thanks for letting me into the meeting.
My pleasure. And had I known that there, Mr. Anderson, I would have had you lead the pledge at the beginning, but uh, we'll get you next time.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks for joining. All right, uh, that being said, we will move on to discuss building and zoning quarterly reports. Tom? So we have the fourth quarter for twenty twenty. The year of the COVID virus. Um, I was expecting a more dire uh, end result and I'm proud to say we didn't really have it. Um, we were below what we were in twenty nineteen, but not too far below. Uh, you can see all the permits issued in the fourth quarter. And where they stack up to the previous twelve years. And where that also stacks up with uh, end year to date. I will say that um, I issued forty nine single-family home permits in twenty twenty. Um. Down from fifty eight in uh. Twenty nineteen, so that's about a sixteen percent. Decline, but not, you know, I, I've lived through a whole lot where we only did two or three. So. You know, that, that's still pretty good for a pandemic year. Moving on to inspections. Same deal. You can see uh, where we stacked up on fourth quarter inspections. And how they um. Register against the previous twelve years on average. And the year to date, uh, looks like uh, the last three years, we've been down slightly. Uh, for inspections. But that's just as, you know. As many as they call in is what we go out on, so. Okay. Any questions for Tom on the quarterly report? Thanks, Tom?
Yeah.
And we'll move on to the chief with his quarterly report.
Okay, a couple of things on here and clarifications and a change. Um. On the first page of it, failed to put the total number of uh, extra dedicated patrol hours in the fourth quarter. That was ten point seven five. So we did have, uh, as listed there, three separate uh, requests for extra patrol compared to a year ago in the, when we did not have any for the fourth quarter. Um. The personnel numbers, uh, we had, had a couple of issues with uh, cutting and pasting the wrong columns uh, in this report, which I did find when I went over it, but didn't get out before the uh, the board packet went out. So under personnel for employees for the two thousand nineteen, um, shouldn't be the same as the two thousand twenty. We actually had eight full-time officers. And eight part-time officers. Overall total employee numbers was the same, um, but we were off, uh, different from where we are now with nine full-time and seven part-time. Um. Along the, the ways, um. When you get back to vehicle use too, um, apparently I had a little problem with copying and pasting the wrong columns from my former report. So although it looks like we. Patrolled in inordinate a number of miles this quarter, uh, it actually was down to. Normal. I did redo those calculations. I just wanted to provide them to the board. So our total quarterly miles. Was twenty nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy two. Uh, not the almost double that, that came into account from copying the wrong column from the last report. Being the beginning miles instead of the ending miles. So my apologies. And then when you factor that into our operational costs, it does get us more in line. To uh, where we stand for the cost per mile, which was twenty nine cents per mile patrolled, which we usually like to be around that thirty cents per mile. To maybe thirty five cents per mile. So we are just down a little bit from there. Um, but those are the two things in there. Quarterly also wanted to point out, um, you know, our total training hours are down significantly from where we were a year ago. As Tom mentioned, in this year of COVID, we've just had so many of our training classes canceled. Um, postponed. We've tried to do what we can via Zoom and through our own in-house and online trainings that we've subscribed to, but a vast majority. and through our own in-house and online trainings that we've subscribed to, but a vast majority of the the outside trainings that we normally send our officers to unfortunately have been canceled. Um I know the uh village attorney, Thomas, mentioned earlier about the uh police reform bill that was passed. And if you've read any of those things in there, there's a number of mandated trainings that come into play coming up. Um although we're certainly open and always encouraged training, that is one of the the things that I have done since I have been here. I am wondering how we're going to get those mandated trainings in. If things don't open back up and we get back to it, we uh it it's it's going to be a challenge for some of the requirements of that new law. We're gonna have to wait and see how it all works out. Um they are very specific in some of the training requirements, including um scenario-based, hands-on type training for many of those. So we're gonna have to watch and see what we can work out with that. I'm actually already started looking at um possibly sending some of our own staff through some instructor training school so we can do Train the Trainer uh to possibly meet the requirements. But again, we have to wait for the only law enforcement training and standards board to come out with the rules on those trainings and what they will accept. So just to let the board know, we are looking at it. We've read through the bill. We're uh trying to become more aware of exactly what it is and in anticipation that the governor is going to sign it. But that will affect um some of those things and just raises a concern um as we get back to training, because there's a lot of other mandated training that we still have to do on top of what they're adding in. And it's it's already difficult because we don't have enough training classes. In particular, in the the Northern Illinois area where the bulk of the population is and where the bulk of our sworn officers in that have to rely on the the state training. So um moving on uh beyond that to the the calendar year totals, uh just kind of pointing out a couple of things on our our overall calls for service were down a little bit. We had less traffic crashes. We obviously had significantly less traffic for um a good part of the year with the um COVID situation. Our alarm calls were down. Again, I think that's uh a lot of the we're not getting quite so many home alarms because more people were either home, working from home or off work. The uh building checks are down, but that was uh partially due to a change in the way we were recording them instead of the previous year where we literally were calling in every single address as officers got out at like a strip mall or a multi-location, they would just call out one, even though they might be rattling rattling doors on six or seven or eight different units. Um so that was more of a procedural change on our part, not a decline in the number of actual building checks that the officers are doing. Um motorists assists were down considerably again. I think that's probably related to our less traffic for a good part of the year. Although we did have an increase in traffic enforcement, uh what we were finding was that the drivers that were out there uh were taking advantage of less traffic and um easier movement throughout and and taking that a little to the excess. So um traffic enforcement activities were up a little bit. And um one other final comment, as we get down into the ordinance fines and violations, kind of ironic that as we have talked about the um metro, the drop in the usage, we actually had more citations written out there this year than the previous calendar year. Uh I did go back and look at some numbers and um almost half of those came from the first quarter when we were still at pretty much normal operation. So um we were doing more enforcement out there uh up until COVID hit and then our usage dropped way down. So that's kind of a quick overview. If anybody has any other questions, uh happy to answer them.
Any questions for the chief on his quarterly report? Slow down out there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Uh back to you, John, for Public Works quarterly report.
Uh Public Works was busy this last quarter. Uh just hit some of the highlights here. Uh the Anderson Road Extension is open. Um Prairie Park for a couple of movie nights, which was really cool. Still working on the risk and resiliency plan. Uh MetroNet uh home installations, hundreds of Julie tickets that kept uh running the guys incredibly busy as well. Uh had to do the early exchange of the WRT. We talked about that briefly earlier. Um Owen also uh uh you know, Phil's favorite, uh planted 33 new Parkway trees throughout town. Um also, uh Public Works did receive a email from the Illinois uh Free City USA Committee. They are going to recommend us for approval. I believe that's going to be our twenty-second year in a row. Diane, does that sound right? Twenty-second? Um so um knowing the the guys have been doing a terrific job with that as well. Um did about the same number of work orders as last year in the same quarter. So if there's any questions on that, I will just keep moving on to the uh to the wastewater side. Where uh John Whartonby and uh the rest of the crew has been keeping busy out there. Uh to me, the thing that's always interesting is the number of gallons it's pumped, the difference between uh between the month, the months, uh October, November, and December remained relatively steady. But then you compare that with last year, and you can see our numbers are way down or the 19 numbers are way up. Uh take them a look at the 2010 numbers. You know, they're they're below current, but probably about what you would expect for population growth. Um I know John's been busy out there dealing with uh with maintenance and everything else. But uh the the plant is working well and we tend to keep running that one. Uh water report, kind of the same way as far as the pumpage. Uh the one thing that I did notice on this um if the uh the annual you'll compare, uh we're up to 157 million gallons for 2020, which is an increase of 10 million gallons over last year and up about 13 millions from uh 2010. It's been a steady increase. So we're up over about 13 million gallons a um a month being pumped. And um I know that there have been uh several, you know, years in the recent past where we were down around 11 million. So our consumption is heading back up. Um I would like to uh think that's due to more population. Um unfortunately, it may also have to do with uh overwatering grass, but uh that's that's the report on water. Is there anything I can possibly answer for you?
All right. Thanks, John, for stepping in. Are you covering this or is Julie covering?
The next one as well. I will be playing Phil Van Bogart all night. Let me see if I can get my head a little bit shinier, so.
You know, this is recorded, right?
Yeah, I know. But do you think he's ever gonna watch this?
No, but we're gonna cut that clip out and play it back for him.
Um we talked about the uh the sidewalk out in uh along South Street, Tricelius, uh the Welch Creek subdivision. And uh so Julie went ahead and drew up a real nice map for us. And uh if you take a look at the map, you know, on South Street, connect the existing sidewalk, it's got to come around and should be paid for um by the storage place. It would run down to the south end of their property line on um on Tricelius. And if we're going to continue to do this so that we have connectivity, uh we, the village, would have to extend it from the south side uh down to Stover and then cross over Stover and run it to the west to where the existing sidewalk is at. Um and then there is also a uh an area where there's a a gap on Harris Street, uh continuing south and then a leg that cuts to the west. When we talked about this in the past, the question came up for for staff to make a recommendation. And this is my recommendation as far as that sidewalk is concerned is, one, I think the uh storage place needs to put in their sidewalk on South Street on Tricelius. And I also think that into the capital improvement plan, we need to put money to complete that sidewalk plan. Um if you remember last, when when we talked about this, and I don't remember exactly who it was, but it's like, well, why is there a gap in that subdivision? Uh why wasn't that done? And you know, I was like, well, I don't know. Wasn't it a requirement or 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 something else? And this would be the same thing that would happen 10 years from now. Maybe a different board, different people sitting here going, why didn't they require the storage place to put the sidewalk in along South Street and along Tricelius? Why, you know, why didn't they do that? And so it would be my recommendation to the board that we follow, you know, the thing that would uh the statements that were put into the strategic plan. And that was connectivity. Let's make sure our people can get to the places that they want to go, that we do have the sidewalks there. Uh Phil did ask me to also include something else in on that map that uh that was not included. Um and I don't know that if it's possible, but it is a neat idea. And that would be to take the sidewalk on Stetser and extend that due west to Tricelius. That you would provide another loop, you would provide more access to somebody who wanted to walk back there. Um this is something I talked to him about this morning. Um I think it's a great idea, worth further investigation. I don't know if it's possible. I don't know if we have the the land to do it. But I think it's something that's worth pursuing. It's an idea that I I think should happen. So and I'll leave this up to the board. What uh what are your thoughts? Uh what are your direction?
Well, I've got a couple of questions, and I think some of this falls into Bill's lap as well. Number one, when we do a subdivision, as in Blackberry Creek or anywhere else and in Elburn Station, we require temporary sidewalks put in by the developer if they haven't sold the lot. Um so we're we're looking at this now that obviously wasn't required of of Drew when he built this out. What recourse do we have to go back to the developer and say you didn't live up to your development obligations? I probably takes a good read of the agreement. Um you know, the subdivision uh or the PUD for this area. Um you know, and I I I personally, while I don't disagree with the sidewalks uh along Tricelius, we're going to take taxpayer money to pay for something that, in in my opinion, should have been done uh probably prior. And then we're going to require one landowner and the whole subdivision to to do what apparently is what's required. And I I don't think that's the right way to go either. Uh just my opinion. Uh it's a board decision, obviously, but you know, I I I think but before we go pushing that big piece of sidewalk on one landowner and then put taxpayer money into it when it should have been done. Um you know, if we're requiring the storage place to do it, it's obviously written somewhere that is required. Well, why isn't that being applied to the rest of the subdivision, I guess is my question. I don't know if that's a Bill question or a John question, or do we need more research or or what?
Well, the I know the subdivision control ordinance came in uh I think it's about oh eight. And that subdivision predates that. Uh I'd have to go back and take a look at what the annexation or the development agreement was as far as what their requirements were. Uh obviously, if there were uh discussions, you know, sidewalks were put in, at least in a portion. I know that they put in around the pond. Tom, do you remember any of that? And I I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you know, if you've got something there, please do so.
Yeah, no, uh you're right. And and just going on straight zoning, none of this is a PUD. So uh just going on straight zoning, it does talk about um the requirement for sidewalks. Um I can't speak for previous um village administrators or or boards, but um a- as as land is developed, um that's where those sidewalks need to be installed. Why it wasn't done from the edge of the proposed uh sidewalk that Julie has uh indicated on Tricelius all the way down to Kesslinger, I could I can't answer that question. Um I do know that in the uh Welch Creek subdivision, it was uh a compromise for the bike path instead of the sidewalks on both sides.
That's what I was gonna say, that the sidewalk that we want, um could a a bike path suffice and be more cost-effective?
I don't know, Julie, is there uh really any cost difference between a an asphalt path of eight feet versus a sidewalk of five?
I'm new, Julie.
You did yourself.
Sorry. Uh let me pull up some numbers here quick while we're doing having this conversation, see if I can find any latest uh bid numbers. But if I I can't find anything, I will definitely get back to you on that. I mean, sidewalk install right now is probably uh I would say anywhere between seven and $10 a square foot. And I'd have to look up asphalt, which is usually done in square yardage, so I would have to do a little math to get them to apples to apples.
Thank you, Julie.
Has anybody talked to Drew Frost to see about when he's gonna put the path in? We'll call it a path to connect to his existing blue path?
Well, originally Drew, we we wanted some sort of walkway or walking path along the creek. I I remember that distinctly because he was also going to have a first wash off his roof. So it didn't go directly into the creek. So it was, you know, there was a embankment along the creek there, which be was to be the walking path. That that's just my recollection. You know, if we're gonna go into sidewalk issues, he'd almost need some sort of SSA so he can raise the money for any future, you know, needs for sidewalk sidewalks. I mean, there was the book, The Sidewalks of Elburn. Sidewalks have been an issue in this village for a hundred and some years.
It would be interesting to go back and look at when um when Welch Creek was being proposed and what the uh minutes were recorded, because I remember we talked with Drew about bike path and sidewalks throughout that subdivision. It seems to be that the sidewalks, it's in green dashed lines uh on Harris Street, that far left, that that has not been completed because that lot has not been built. Now, from from this view, now perhaps it's already, it's now been built out. I haven't been back there recently just to to know, but um that that path would be completed when that lot was sold or built on. I seem to remember, as you do, Sue, that when we talked to Drew about this, it was the thought was putting in bike path throughout for walking. Um so I agree. If we haven't, if there was nothing in the minutes, it said, you know, we weren't gonna make him do that. Um uh maybe we need to tap him on the shoulders and ask him when he's gonna complete the work.
Yeah, you know, i- if someone were to say who's gonna walk back there, you know, there's businesses back there. They could go out on their lunch hour and walk on these paths and maybe somebody from the um uh Columbine neighborhood would walk back there to work or whatnot.
You know, but I think that'd be a great area that would be a very nice uh loop and walking path that would extend our bike path and walking trail.
Yep, keep us off the street.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think you're gonna find a lot of the running community would use that if it was complete as well. They love long run.
Oh, yeah.
Or, you know.
Definitely.
Rob Riley getting all excited about it right now.
And and Jeff, I I have not specifically looked into any um developer obligations, one way or the other, bike path, sidewalk, or nothing, nor the uh subdivision control ordinance. But if if that's what we need to do to ensure obligations are met, uh I'll be happy to do that.
Yeah, I think that's the first step before we put taxpayer money into it. Let's see. Let's see if there's some obligation there on the developer's part. While we're looking at this board, the purple part that says proposed sidewalk, would we rather see a bike path there and make the whole thing like one big bike path that runs through back there a little bit wider, a little bit, you know, asphalt rather than concrete?
I think I prefer that.
That would be better.
You know, one of the challenges as as a walker is sidewalks have a tendency to heave. And it's very easy between patches, you know, the segments of a sidewalk, catch your foot. And it's very easy between patches, you know, the segments of a sidewalk, catch your foot and you go flying. And I could say I'm probably the clumsy one who has done that before. So in a asphalt path does not have that tendency. So I would vote for, or or my my desire would be for asphalt versus concrete.
Agreed, Pat. I think that's why people walk the streets instead of the sidewalks when they're walking, you know, to avoid the trip hazards.
That's what I do.
Yeah, in the snow right now.
Well, yeah.
From those who didn't shovel. Okay, so it sounds like we're more interested in a a bike path for that area. But I think we need to take a look first, have Bill take a look at if there's anything that Drew should be doing first before we put any money into it. Everybody agreed with that?
I agree. I agree.
Disagree? All right, so I think that's our path forward there, John.
I assume you did there, Jeff. Sorry, I'm I'm taking a look at the the annexation agreement right here. Public sidewalk and walking trails, says public sidewalk and walking trails into development shall be constructed in accordance with approved engineering plans. And will be constructed at permits, middle plans and information shall comply with site design and section five oh three of the ordinance. And shall be submitted in conjunction with final engineering. So. It sounds like we will need to try to find the final engineering plans to see if they're on there. And I'll look a little bit deeper and see what else we can find to help support putting in. A a bike path.
Okay, yeah, I can't imagine the board would have said no halfway through this, because there are some places with sidewalks, some without. It's just kind of weird back there. Okay.
All right.
All right, sounds like it's budget time.
It is budget time, and lucky for you, the first budget up is admin. And that is the the ten ten budget. Also, if you'll notice on your packages. All of the the pages have been numbered throughout, beginning from front to end, not just the individual agenda items. Joanne has got a new piece of software and she's trying out something new. And so we're trying to make the numbering system a little bit better. So right now I'm on page nineteen.
Please thank Joanne for the numbering. It does make things a lot easier to talk about when you have one number on the page.
Right, one number throughout the entire agenda. So she's been doing a bang up job and really do appreciate all of her help putting these things together. Couple of things that, you know, one you'll notice, obviously, the salary and all the benefit stuff, that's never in there on that first pass anyways. One of the things that is in there, I would like to repaint the front, you know, the the parking area, get that restripped. We'll have the sign in before the end of the fiscal year, so get some some landscaping in around the new sign and the flagpole, so that's in there. Under other professional services, five forty nine, we've got eighteen five in there for the CMAP RTA study. Little bit of background on that, they were supposed to have this started, kicked off sometime back in October. And I'm expecting an invite sometime this week for a free proposal. Meeting, so they don't even have the proposals out, they don't have anybody picked. And this eighteen five is our portion of that grant. They estimate that the the study's gonna take twelve to fourteen months. If they're going at the current pace, this eighteen five may actually end up being pushed into the twenty twenty. Re fiscal year, because we will, our dollars will come in at the very end of the grant as it gets paid out, not at the beginning. So that's in there. The other thing too that that I wanted to ask. Is one of the things we talked about was doing a review of the strategic plan. And we can either start that before the fiscal year ends, we've got money to to cover a portion of it. Or we can start it after May first. I'm not really sure if there's one way better to go or not. Unless there is a massive write-in campaign between now and April. We know who's gonna be sitting on this board. So we can either start the strategic plan earlier, or we can wait until after May first. Keep in mind that, you know, this will have to be a a separate meeting. And all of our meetings are spoken for with at least budget every single. You know, for for February, for March and going into April. You know, that we're always gonna have those on them. The other thing is that we also have NIUCGS that are still doing our employment position study. That's gonna take some time still. I expect that they will be done by the end of the fiscal year, so. It's it's really up to the board. If you'd like to go ahead and move forward with it this year. You know, maybe we get started with it in April and don't finish it up until over the summer, that's a possibility. But just wanted to get your input on what you thought when you'd like to start. Any preferences? Well, if there's no preferences, then I will propose that we start after May first. Just from the standpoint of of what we've got on the calendar. Other than that, let's see, Doug, you got fifteen hundred dollars in bank fees, I'm assuming that's gone up for some reason. And then also community relations is is the same as it has been in years past. You know, pretty much this is a status quo operational budget. We don't spend a whole lot, you know, it's pens, it's papers, it's, you know. Occasional publishing for public notices and that sort of thing, so. Any questions I can answer on the public works? Public works, there I go, wrong hand, on the admin operational budget.
What's the the downtown lights, John? Is that the the ones in the buildings or?
Yeah, that's to put those up. For the chamber, when we do the Christmas stroll and just to have those up during the winter time.
So did we pay for that this year? The thought that the chamber paid for it?
No, the chamber did not pay. We helped pay for it. We own those lights and we helped pay to put those up. Our contribution towards the downtown Christmas stroll plus through the rest of December and January and now into February. You know, I just think that that gives a real nice extra touch to the downtown when you're going through there at, you know, four thirty, five o'clock and it's already done.
No doubt, they're great. I'm just, I'm a little concerned about this funding situation here, because they raised all that money. If you notice at the bank, there's a big list of. People who sponsored those lights. You're saying we paid for it.
Not not the whole thing.
Oh, okay. That's just our portion.
We we put towards money, we put money towards that project, yes.
Okay. I'm good on that, all right. Anybody else on this particular part of the budget? Nope. All right, John, move on to. Whatever's next.
Okay, so the the next one is fifteen ten. That is our our capital and we have two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in there. And that is the the balance of the wastewater treatment plant expansion money that we have talked about. I don't know, this may be the second year, third budget year that we've talked about this. We're using that money for for GIS, we're using it for SCADA, basically to beef up our. Our IT infrastructure that's not necessarily related to office work. So I mean, it's not necessarily for. For computers, but it's. It's still information technology, so we can get all of our stuff connected. And start the GIS program.
Any questions on that, anyone?
No, no.
Next.
Forty six forty one, this is. I believe the operation for parks. And so we've got fifteen thousand dollars in there for the Elburn Station Community Park. And any other supplies that we may end up having. These numbers may change. I have a meeting tomorrow morning with with Shodin to discuss maintenance on this. And. Whose responsibility is it to actually maintain these parks? Doug, was this the park money or was this the SSA money? SSA six? Forty six forty one?
Well, forty forty six is the recreation fund.
Okay. So then you transferred money into that one then, because you, what fifty six is recreation, what's forty six forty one? We didn't have a title on there.
You're right. Forty, I'm I'm sorry, forty six is SSA six.
Okay, okay, so we do collect money from the SSA for for maintenance. And I got to work with Shodin, make sure that they are paying their fair share, if not more. Of the maintenance out there, according to our development agreement with them. That's a meeting I'm having with them tomorrow, so these numbers may change. If anything, I would expect that they're going to drop and not increase.
I thought they were responsible for maintenance of the parks.
Well, they are with the with the development agreement, no different than what it is over in Blackberry. Where they do the maintenance, but it gets reimbursed, you know, as far as the grass mowing and that kind of stuff. But you know, you start talking about mulch or the equipment, then that falls on us. But there's also a clause in there that. They are responsible for it up until, I believe it's about ninety percent of buildup. So that's the point that I am going to be pushing is that they are responsible for it and not the SSA. But. We'll see where that goes, so, oh, we have a cat.
Yeah, because I thought from everything Mr. Skidmore has told us that they're responsible, the SSA. As the ultimate responsibility, that includes equipment, personnel, I mean, the whole thing, so we we need to make sure we're. Great.
Right, ultimately, the SSA will be funded. It's between now and the ultimate outcome is where. The details get sticky and.
We planted a big old soccer field there that's gonna have to get cut next year before it can get used and taken care of and. You know, where's that one more coming from? And where's our time to get that cut coming from and all the rest?
Right.
All right.
The next one we have on here is the one fifty six recreation fund.
Zoom in on this one.
Yeah, it's a it's a little tight. But if you'll notice that Mr. Cozal has been waiting oh so patiently and we do appreciate it. He is the the chairman of the Parks Committee and came up with most of what is on here. And really, I would. I I think they have followed their direction from the village board and that is to dream big. And they have, you know, I mean, they've done a terrific job, they've come up with a lot of great ideas. And this budget reflects more of those great ideas of of pushing forward, so. Dan, I'll turn that over to you and let you explain some of your ideas behind these numbers. And you have to unmute, Dan.
Here we go. All right, thanks. Yeah, obviously, that's a that's a big price tag that we submit once a year. To go coincide with our dreams and ideas for the for the village and we understand that. Also understand that we try to be fiscally responsible in finding sponsorships and donors for these projects also. If you look at the the comment section. On the on the sheet there, you can see that we are hoping to get some of those items donated to, so. Just keep that in mind that we we are responsible. And, you know, we'll come up with an idea and by the guidance of the village or John, you say, no, we'll move on to the next project and and see what. What does fit in the purse strings. I think everybody has realized at one time or another that with the developments of parks in the village. Comes additional responsibilities and and expenses eventually down the road, maintenance, upkeep. I understand that we're gonna be meeting with a couple soccer clubs here in the future. And they're gonna be talking about inquiring about more soccer fields in the immediate future, if we can do it. And we've already started kicking ideas about expanding that open space in the Blackberry Creek area by the ball fields. Understand there's a current agreement with the club that they kind of condition the field that they currently use. If we can expand that open field and have a similar agreement where they help condition that field for the future. That's a win-win for the village and and for that club. Also, the Elburn Station area, we know we've got one field seeded in there. But that won't be ready for play till probably next year at the earliest. Even if we get grass coming up on it, you put a a season of soccer on it and that that field will be destroyed in a heartbeat. So with that in mind, trying to cultivate fields, we're kicking around the idea of trying to develop the. Field next to that in Elburn Station, so we have two new fields going at the same time. And hopefully we can alternate play on those two fields to conserve and promote the growth down there. Some of the things that we're looking for. To manage this year. So. Obviously, the north side of the village, we try to. Incorporate that in this year's plan. We've spent a lot of focus on Blackberry Creek. Now we're headed north and with that, we have limited property to expand or. Or create new opportunities, the the new development on the far. North side of town is gonna be a plus, but that the older section of town. Needs a little little pick me up with that community center playground that has just. Kind of got pushed back off onto the community center and and left in disarray. That equipment's passed its lifespan. And we're focusing and hoping to redo that park for that area of town. So. That's pretty much what the park is thinking. At this time, we have a meeting tomorrow, at which time we'll be talking. We'll be taking any input that you give us this evening to the board tomorrow, and then we'll also try and develop some type of a an updated. Long-term plan and goals for the the park committee. That's all I have, John.
Well, Dan, you kind of skipped over the the band shelf out of Prairie Park. Continuation of of movie night out there as well. Although the movie night, hopefully, we will have a sponsor for that or. Whether or not they pay for it all, or at least a part, but we're we're hoping that we've got a sponsor with it between MetroNet and Lake Shore Recycling as well. I think that was one of the great ideas that they came up with. And it was incredibly well received and I'd like to see that continue in the summer.
I agree. Honestly, in my opinion, and this is just my opinion, and I know a few people are probably gonna choke, but. I I don't think we're spending enough, to be honest, although this is a good start. You know, we continue year over year to put more money in the bank. If you look at Doug's report from tonight. We're gonna be about two million dollars ahead of last year. Currently are about two million dollars ahead. And I think to put some of this back out, and you got, you you all have heard me say this many times before. We're not in business to make a profit, although we need a healthy savings to make sure we can run this village if we have to. If we're carrying, you know, additional funds that their taxpayers have given us. I think it's it's incumbent upon us to put that money back into the village. I know when we see Phil's request, fourteen people are probably gonna fall over. Because he's going after some pretty big road projects next year. And these are the things that that the village, you know, the village, the residents expect us to do. I I think that this asked, in my opinion, is is not outrageous. I think the hundred and eighty thousand. For that park improvement might be a little little much, but I think we saw Elliot Park going for about a hundred thousand, but with a lot of. Blood, sweat and tears from locals like Trustee Anderson and some of the others who came out and. And did the work, so maybe that includes some of the work, but. And I'd like to commend the the park commission. This is what we've asked you to do. I know this is what, your third year running, fourth year maybe, coming into. These are the things I, the band structure, I. Um, these are the things I, the band structure, I think, is great. I think the movie nights were a huge success last year. Uh, to put it, to put a raised stage out there to where you could have little concerts and, you know, we've got parking on first and, and north. We've got parking at Village Hall, library, whatever people can get to it. It's centrally located. You know, what a great idea to bring people into town. Um, Dan mentioned earlier, the, the soccer and football and baseball leagues. They've all contacted me or John or, or both of us or, or, you know, the park commissioner or whoever, but they've all been in contact with us. They all want to see Elburn facilities grow so they can bring more events into town. The football guys, uh, play five games a weekend, no, five, over five weekends. There's four games a weekend, I think, is what they told us. So that's a lot of people coming to town. The, the soccer folks, you know, the baseball teams, all these people come to Elburn and spend money here. So i- not only is this good for the residents, i- it's good for the village in the long run as we're generating more sales tax with these folks that come to town and spend their money here. Um, you know, I'm sure the restaurants would love to, to see the increase in business from, you know, all of you have kids and have all been soccer moms, dads, baseball, whatever sport or band or whatever, and you know what it's like when you travel. You're always looking at that town to go spend your money because you're there and it's convenient and where can we go eat? So I think, uh, we, we met, just to give everybody a little bit of heads up, Dan and, and John and I uh, met and Phil was there as well to talk about, you know, all these requests we're getting all, all of a sudden, and, and where does that take us in the future? And what is, what is, what do parks look like in Elburn? Is it a parks department? Is it a separate, you know, uh, taxing body, which I'm not in favor of, but anyway, that's another personal opinion. Um, you know, so i- we're, 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 we're getting the Parks Commission thinking ahead like we asked them to do. I think they've done a great job presenting us with some, some pretty feasible projects here. Uh, again, a lot of it's donated. I've got, um, ten thousand dollars in the wing from a local business for a field to, uh, to donate to, to name a field. So if we can get those kind of, of budget reductions, we just as a board have to decide to, let's put this stuff in place and, and let's get going on it. Um, so I think I've ranted and raved enough. I'll get off my soapbox and, and let the board members speak to this, but, uh, what, what do you all think?
I think these, I think all the ideas look really outstanding and very exciting. I guess I have two, two questions as I think about this. One, it's probably more of a, of a Doug accounting question. You know, certainly when you have a, you know, recreation isn't an enterprise fund, so we can fund it and we can put money into it. Do we, as part of a budget, do we need to, um, uh, how, how do we do that so that we are putting enough funds in revenue or do we do an interdepartmental transfer to, to fund it? So if, you know, we're looking at five hundred thousand shortfall from revenue, is that the vehicle to do that? That's my one question. My second question is, I guess I'm, I'm wondering about the community center, um, playground. Because this was a topic several years ago. And prior to, uh, it, it came up in conversation because the playground, playground equipment was obsolete or was out of usage and safety, and we donated it back to the community center because th- there was a problem with the inter, intergovernmental agreement with the community center or something. Please refresh my memory with that.
Yeah, the lease expired. When, when the village put it in, we leased the land from them with the intent to turn it over to them when the lease was over. And then we were just on the board. I think we had just gotten started.
Yeah.
That lease expired and the board said, oh, just let it expire and we'll donate the equipment to the, uh, community center. So it's their equipment now.
Okay, so, but we don't, oh, we don't have a lease.
No, that would have.
We're going to, yeah, so if we're gonna improve the equipment, we need to somehow come into a lease with the community center.
Well, the last year about this time, we had hoped that we would get a, uh, an Ozland grant for their property, and we already started the discussion with the community center about a lease. Uh, they were open to the idea, and, uh, following the discussion tonight, um, I was going to make contact with them again on whether or not, you know, if the board thinks that they wanna move forward with it, I will make contact with them. If the board doesn't think that this is something to do this year, then I, I'm not going to bring it up.
The last time I checked, the, the bank, I don't know who owns the community center right now. The bank held like at one time seven hundred thousand dollar mortgage on it. And the bank didn't wanna talk about any leases because that came up under Aaron when we could have gotten the money for half the money for playground equipment, but the bank wouldn't go along with it. I, I don't, I'm not sure who operates and whether the bank owns it now, or I, I have no idea. But it was the bank that objected to any kind of lease when we could have gotten a grant for new playground equipment.
Right.
Well, definitely have to check into that then, John, because that'd be a big chunk right out of that budget if we can't get the land to do it.
Right.
Right. So then how do we fund this?
I can.
Funded out of the general fund. It would be offset by the, uh, additional sales tax and, uh, gaming income.
I'd, I'd like to comment on this if I could.
Go ahead.
The, we have dedicated revenue sources for this fund, and it's, i- if you look at the top half under revenue, it's non-home rule sales tax and gaming income. Um, then we get a little interest on the money, uh, but, but interest doesn't amount to much. So you'll see projected for the current year, a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in revenue. Uh, so our, our revenue sources are not going to be sufficient to support what's being requested here. So then, then you have to think of other sources, either, either find a way to increase the revenue or, or reduce the expenditures. Uh, but other possibilities are to levy a park tax to pay for these things. Uh, w- we do not have a park tax or a recreation tax. So if i- if this is an important part of what we want to provide to the community, perhaps we should consider um, a referendum to levy a, either a park tax or a recreation tax or both, de- depending on what you foresee through the years as wh- what you wanna spend on your park system. So that's one comment. Uh, e- earlier Jeff had referred to the Treasurers Report where it shows that we have about two mil- two million dollars more in the bank now than what we did a year ago. But I'd, I'd like to remind everybody that part of the reason that we have increased bank balances, we have taken very deliberate steps to transfer money into the reserve fund. For the general fund, we've got general capital fund, Fund Fifteen, and also the capital fund for water and sewer, which is Fund Thirty-Five. So we are very deliberately putting money into those funds in order to finance the capital improvement plan, both the strategic plan and the capital improvement plan. So the capital improvement plan uh, goes out, it's a five-year plan. So just, just because we have what appears to be a surplus of funds, uh, a lot of it is already intentioned for expenditures in one or both of those capital funds that, that go out five years. So the plan may not be to spend, spend it all this year or next year, but over the five-year plan, there are more expenses in the capital plans than what we will have money to finance. So, so a, a, a temporary what appears to be a surplus really isn't a surplus. So, so we wanna be a little cautious on, on what we do with that. So i- i- it, it sounds like there's an interest in having the Parks and Recreation Fund to be more and more and more going forward, and that's a good thing for a community is, is Parks and Recreation. And eventually we're going to be looking at staffing probably for that, but then resources and maintaining the resources. And so if, if we think this is a thing that the that we wanna see progress in the future and that the community will support in the future, my suggestion is to, uh, hold a referendum to get a tax, a property tax approved to pay for parks and recreation.
I'll just add on top of that, that we told the voters when they approved that one percent extra sales tax, that was for parks and roads. So I don't go back out and ask you for more money. Uh, might, might work. I don't know. I don't know what the village's taste is, but remember, we're also looking at a new police station down the road.
Yes, we are, and but that's, that sales tax is going in to the recreation fund and the gaming income is going into the Fund Fifty-Six Recreation Fund. So, uh,
Is the full amount of gaming income going into recreation, or is it still being split?
Yeah, I'll have to say. But I.
Seeing as far as I know, from what I've seen.
I can tell you in a second.
Same thing with the, uh, non-home rule sales taxes being split as well.
We could also just, uh, have a referendum to form a park district. And that would be a separate taxing body.
Yes, it would.
I, I believe the non-home rule sales tax, all of it is going into Fund Fifty-Six Recreation. Uh, and gaming income, a portion of it is going into the general fund and a portion of it into Fund Fifty-Six Recreation.
Doug, it's gotta be split among some other, uh, fund, and I thought it was supposed to go in the street because I thought that the estimate for revenue for non-home rule sales tax was in the neighborhood of between four hundred and four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And I don't see that kind of money going into parks and rec. So, uh, I think the vast majority of that's going in the streets.
Yeah, I think the budget says three hundred and forty-three thousand.
Right.
Yeah, we don't, we don't show non-home rule sales tax as a revenue in the general fund. Uh-huh. But we, but we do show it in the general capital fund. Yeah.
General operating, there's an income revenue line for non-home rule sales tax. Oh, it is zero. Okay, I was looking at the wrong line.
All right. So, so we do show non-home rule sales tax as a revenue in the general capital fund. That would be Fund Fifteen. So, so yeah, that's, we showed three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars there.
So I know I have talked in the past about the referendum idea and getting a park district. If people wanna have all these amenities, which I'm not disagreeing, they're important to the village of Elburn, that going through that process is how all the other park districts were created in the communities to the east of us. So, or to the south of us. And we should be, if this is that important and we're gonna go double, we're gonna go beyond the income coming in. I don't think we're being fiscally responsible in, in distributing the monies that we do have. We're going beyond what I, I think we've agreed to in, in saying we've got these monies that, that are coming in that are taxpayer or sales tax and gaming income, those kind of things and donations. Why can't we live within the means that we have? And the budget being the hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Then we go next year and we update the street strategic plan accordingly because this isn't even on the strategic plan. So we're not even following what we said were our priorities for five years. So I just, I think I can appreciate the park board and what they've done, but I think w- we're, we're asked to also live within the means that we've been giving. And going beyond that, I think we don't have a, um, what do you call it? A, a direction from the taxpayer saying, yeah, go and spend double or triple the amount of money that we have coming in. They gave us the non, you know, that portion of the non, uh, non-home rule, and we said the gaming could go towards it, but I think if we wanna move forward and spend this kind of money, I think we, you, you get a group of volunteers, create a park board advocacy or whatever you wanna call it, and let's put a referendum out there and create a park district.
All right. Any other thoughts?
I, I agree with Ken. I, it's been a discussion for years. Can we form that district in considering the amount of new homes, new people, new families that have come to Elburn? But maybe it's time, um, that we've got people who are mindful of that it's something we need to do.
All right. Um, so I guess then the question is, what are we cutting out of this to get it down to one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars? Sounds like the project at the community center isn't, won't go because that's one big chunk that you can't do part of it. Which would get us down to that area.
Hundred and twenty, I think. Yeah, they'll get you down to about a hundred and fifteen.
A hundred and fifteen that we need to still cut?
No, there, the, the proposal is, uh, about two forty-five total, two forty-four, nine fifty. And the estimate for the park at the community center is a hundred and eighty.
Okay. Where is the, okay, the twenty-twenty-one projected? That's what I was, I was looking at the wrong column. So really what the number that we're looking for is a projected income of a hundred and sixty-two next year. And two ninety-four minus the one eighty, we would be within the means.
Correct. So, so what if you look at the community park, once again, get some more information on what needs to happen there to make it happen? And look at getting an Ozland grant for that, and then that number changes for fiscal year the following year, whatever, that's twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. And why don't we update this strategic plan? And we look at doing, uh, some kind of referendum to get people to say it's time for a park, park district.
Uh, I know that for this coming year, there are no Ozland grants. The state has already put that out. Harman Vadi and I said that there will be no Ozland grants this year.
For this year, correct.
For this year. So we'll have to see what happens in twenty-twenty-two.
I think that's the only thing we can do, and I think I would, the community center, I think, yeah, it's, there's a high value with having, uh, quality playground equipment very central into, um, into our core area of our community. I think there's, I, I just have a lot of questions as to the, um, the viability of the community center. What are that, what's that board going to do with their building? And as Bill brought up, you know, um, who owns it and are they willing to do something? There's. And are they willing to do something? There's some questions as to what we can do there. I'm com, you know, I feel very comfortable with, you know, putting off the park improvements at the Community Center for a future year. Barring additional funding or clarity as to our partnership with the Community Center. And um, hopefully that would then allow us to live within the projected revenue that's coming in.
Alright. Anyone else have thoughts? So it sounds like the Community Center Park comes out. And we'll look at next Ozland Grants, and in the meantime, some research needs to be done of the status of the Community Center and. Whether they can even lease us the land.
Yeah, a- and again, I don't know how they're operating because they don't have enough. Tenant income that I can see to pay off that mortgage. I, I, I have no, all I know is the bank specifically said no. And that was uh, when Aaron was uh, when, when we had the possibility of getting. A fifty percent grant to replace the playground equipment.
Yeah, that sounds really familiar. Okay, well, something staff can look into then.
Yeah.
So everybody else is good with the rest of the numbers?
I sure love the ideas that the Park Board has come up with. Great job, guys. It's, it's. Um, I know that the movies and the park and just all the other things were really outstanding, and it's very, it's great to see the creativity. And the enthusiasm for doing some um, some things that helps bring the community together.
Thank you. We'll pass that on to the uh, rest of the committee members.
And when whoever wins the mega drawing tonight, just kick in a couple bucks and we'll put in a new park somewhere.
Yeah, if I win, I'll, I'll buy the Community Center and, and you know, you can make it the, the memorial, you know, well, not.
Community Center. I like that.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay.
Just as a heads up, if you're interested.
Alright, uh, so I guess Tom's budget is next?
Yep. Uh, yeah, pretty short and sweet. Um. Just going off numbers from, you know, projected from last year and projecting them forward to this year. The only thing I can't count on is uh, how long this um, COVID uh, situation's gonna take place. You see the only red number there, one twenty-five, I'm not, I, I think that was a reimbursement for a class I was supposed to take. Uh, that was refunded, but um, ordinarily, every March I go to uh. Training for um, continuing education units. And uh. Most of the ones I signed up for, the, certainly that one, was canceled because of the COVID. So. Everything else is pretty much in line. Uh, Doug's got them split up. With all the utilities that, you know, we all get uh, charged a third for, so uh. And then you see like books and, and uh, training or dues rather. Um, that comes from just um, renewing membership into uh, the um. ICC uh, affiliation that I'm involved in, so. It's pretty much it. If you have any questions, let me know.
So things we'll have to add into here that, that aren't there yet. Of course, there are salaries and benefits. But then the janitorial and IT service are, are mine. And, and like Tom said. We split those between admin, police, and building zoning. We don't have those numbers yet. Uh, the telephone number, we don't have yet. And then the natural gas and general insurance, those, that, those are zeros on there, but. When it's all finished, those, those won't be zeros.
Okay. Any questions for Tom on his budget? Alright, who's going through this sip?
I can. Uh, the, the capital improvement plan you have in your packet goes by department. Uh, we, we won't go over every line. The department heads have. Put a lot of work in on this to date, and um. So it's organized by department and then it then splits it out. Year by year, the twenty-twenty and the twenty-twenty-one year, those are fiscal years, not, not calendar years. So fiscal, fiscal year twenty-twenty-one is the fiscal year that we're in right now. Fiscal year twenty-twenty-two is the one that will start in May of twenty-one. And go through April of twenty-two. The fiscal year is the last year. So fiscal year twenty-two is the one that ends in twenty-two. Uh, fiscal year twenty-three is the year that ends in twenty-twenty-three. So that's, that's how that works. So it, it's split out there year by year. Uh, so the twenty-twenty and the twenty-twenty-one are really historical numbers. And then going forward, we go forward five years from there. Uh, the, the shading. Designates which ones are complete. So some of these are all done and that we still show them on the plan, but. We show them as complete. Some are in progress as, as we speak. They're, they're currently in progress. But not yet finished. Uh, so let's look quickly at the Administration Department. So. Um, nothing there for. Any year, any fiscal year past the fiscal year that we're in right now. So, so nothing. Nothing planned for admin uh, going out after this year. Police Department. Several things there, quite a few things, in fact, for planning for the Police Department and they're. They're all listed there. The, one of the new items that was added this year. And if I can find it, the copy I'm looking at is really small and my bifocals are. Not quite as strong as they should be. But we have. Nick, you had me add on some uh, some new items because of this new legislation that. That just recently passed, so.
We did in, in twenty-twenty-five, the fiscal year, we added the projected cost of body cameras. Um, in that line, that is just the cost of the body cameras right now. Uh, we are kind of anticipating the need for an additional, at least part-time staff member to go along with that. The way it looks right now, um, to take care of the redaction, review and FOIA requests that are required to go along with those body cameras. But that's an estimate at this point in time on a cost. That may have to be tweaked between now and then, but that's the best guess from what I have right now with some. Very quick research from some other departments that have already deployed body cameras and, and their costs and trying to. Extrapolate them down to a department of our projected size at that time.
So, so that new legislation is gonna, is gonna cost us. A, a pretty good chunk of money, so we, it's, it's in the plan. The others. Significant item is in the Police Department is item fourteen. The third column from the left is item number, so look at item number fourteen, and that's the new police facility. It's in there as fifteen million dollars, and it would be in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. So that's. But, that's a large item. Alright, uh, then the design of the new PD is item ten, item number ten. And so that's, that's another uh. Uh, significant entry in the Police Capital Budget. Alright, any, any questions or comments on the Police Capital Budget? Then going to building and zoning. Building and zoning's kind of overdoing it. They got one whole item in the budget, and uh. Tom does a good job of. Running his department uh, without a whole lot of resources, so he, he's planning a. A garage in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five and at, at the cost of twenty, twenty thousand dollars, so.
Which I was thinking of this morning as I was scraping the uh, ice off of my village vehicle.
Yeah. Alright, the next item, next department is Street Department, and um. Lots of items in the Street Department. It goes on to the next page even, and the next page after that, so. We're not gonna go over each one, but just, just scan through there. Quickly, some of those items, in fact, several of those items repeat. Year after year after year. And so road paving, we do road paving every year, or. Going forward, we'll probably do some road paving every year and sidewalk maintenance and. Street markings and tree replacement. Those are the kind of things that are recurring every year. And you'll see, I, item, well, I don't have an item, item forty-three is the Tricillius Road Extension. And that's at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. And then item forty-four is Route thirty-eight and Anderson Road Improvement. That's three hundred thousand dollars. In this next fiscal year, so fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. So that's gonna be the very next fiscal year. So those, those are two pretty significant items coming up in our very next fiscal year.
Diane, I thought that Route, Route thirty-eight and Anderson Road, he was just gonna budget for engineering for now. Till we see if we're getting any help from the state.
I'll have to double check unless Julie knows.
That's definitely not engineering, so.
Yeah, that's a lot of money for, I mean, I know there's a lot of work there. The stoplight goes in. But I thought when we had that discussion there, he was gonna lower that down. So that, that number may change, just so everybody knows that. The thought there is that we've got money from Keith Wheeler. Uh, from the state to do part of the project, three hundred and some thousand, John, I don't remember the exact number. Um, so we want to look at, you know, what can we do with what they can give us and what we can do with maybe what we can put into it. But I don't think we have enough. It's, that's gonna be a million dollar plus project to put a street light in there with the. Extra turn lanes that'll be required and, and whatever else, so.
I think the grant would cover us. It would get us the, uh, it would get us temporary lights in there, but certainly not much else. You're not gonna get land acquisition, you're not gonna get turn lanes, you're not just, you know, it's not gonna be a big, beautiful, fully improved intersection. It's gonna be what we have right now with stoplights.
Alright, so I think that number, we gotta kind of get Phil's take on what, what all's included in that. Cause that may, that may go down significantly for next year.
Alright, I'm, I'm, so, these were, are the most recent numbers that Phil gave to me, so. It sounds like it needs more discussion on some of it. Uh, if you'll look at item. Number fifty-two, item number fifty-two is also in this next coming fiscal year. Road paving Cambridge and Paul, we, we've got nine hundred and ten thousand dollars in there for that. So there, there's some pretty uh. Pretty significant uh, projects planned in the next few years and particularly in this next fiscal year. And uh, we're trying to. To account for all of them in this capital plan. If you'll go on to the next page, then. It'll show you the Street Department total, but by fiscal year, so. In fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, which is this next one coming up, we're at two million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand. And then it goes down for fiscal twenty-twenty-three. Uh, but, but as the plan stands now. This, this next year's gonna be a pretty big year, lots, lots of street projects planned in this coming fiscal year. So that's, that's the CIP for streets. Uh, so we'll. When Phil gets back into town, we'll uh. A- ask him to clarify some of these things for. For this coming fiscal year. Any other comments or questions about Street Department? Alright, let's move on. The next department is Water Department. And uh. We've got some water main replacement coming up, so item. It's, item number ninety-six is water main replacement. We're looking at eight hundred thousand dollars. That's planned for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. And then more water main replacement in eight hundred thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-five. Also in twenty-twenty-five, we're gonna have uh, some water tower. Some water tower expenses. So any. Questions or comments on the Water Department Capital Plan?
Are some, are some of these um, plant expenses in the water, is, as part of that, the INI? Review and that we've been looking at, the analysis that we've been seeing?
I think Phil would have to answer that for you.
Isn't that in the sewer? All the INI stuff?
Some of that's in sewer uh, for twenty-twenty-two, but I, I think what Phil was trying to do. Was balance across all of it because you got road work, you got water main work, you got storm sewer, you got sanitary. So he's kind of putting a little bit in each to get all of it done based on what needs to be done first, you know, once everything's prioritized.
And I, and I see that's beginning and that's uh, being forecasted to begin in twenty-twenty-three, actually.
Correct. Yeah, cause we still don't have the one, the, the Seamap Road piece back yet, right, Julie?
We don't have the Seamap uh, information in yet. Actually, we just got the draft memo here this week.
So once that gets combined, everything will be put together into a, then this plan will fall into that. Where do we need to go first?
Okay.
So some of these numbers will get moved around and, and pushed a little here and there, but. I think Phil's just trying to plan to make sure there's money there for it.
And I see probably what was a typo on my. On my side, we've got eight hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five twice. One of those should be beyond, beyond twenty-twenty-five, it should be the next column over. Uh, I just. Got the wrong year on that, so I'll, I'll get that corrected. Alright, that's water. Any other? Comments on water? Alright, next page is sewer. And. I'll just let you. Kind of scan through there and see if, what questions you may have about that. kind of scan through there and see if what questions you may have about that. And there again, like with water on sewer, there's there's some items that recur every year. So you'll you'll kind of see those repeat from one year to the next.
It also doesn't look like any of the numbers from the S S E S is in here either. So that's going to have to be something that will be updated by Phil.
He actually only was going to include that three hundred thousand dollars to do repair the manholes this year. I don't think he was going to do everything which came to like seven hundred and fifty thousand. So if that is a discussion for Phil to have with you, though.
Yeah, so twenty three, twenty four and twenty five will go up based on all this planning.
All right, that's sewer. Any other comments on sewer? Next page is Metro. And so it's we're 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 being pretty conservative on the metro side of things here. So.
Well, on the capital side, probably I'd just go ahead and eliminate these these two projects down here and push them off a year. Uh, the lot striping, the crack ceiling. It should, you know, unless this turns around significantly on May first, this lot's still going to be in trouble for the next year as far as revenues go. And we've got other operational costs that we're going to have to cover before we start taking a look at capital.
All right, I and I don't think we have a Metro Capital Fund, right? It comes out of General Capital.
That comes out.
Metro Fund and it's all funded by the.
Okay, that's right. We never we talked about putting a line in there at one time and just don't have enough money to do it. Yeah, I agree. Think that should move.
All right, that would be item one twelve and one thirteen. So I will remove those from the capital plan.
Any other thoughts on that from the board?
Just push them out of your Doug. Don't remove and push them out of your.
Yeah, okay.
Everybody good with that?
So move, move, not remove, move to next year.
Yep. I think we got all head nods from the board there. So.
All right. Okay, that's the that's the capital improvement plan, department by department. And it's it's a dynamic thing. So it's it it helps us a lot in our planning as we go year to year, but it it's not intended to be something carved in stone that once you approve it, that it never changes because it is dynamic and it and it will change from from year to year or or even more often than that at times. So but it helps us in our budgeting process when we particularly when we want to get a a vision of what we're looking at, not just for the coming year, but for a few years out. So it it helps as a planning tool in that respect. So that that's all I have on that unless you have any more questions. All right, thank you.
All right, Chief Stub Street Parking.
Okay, um, as you can see in the memo attached, we've been dealing with an issue, uh, well, pretty much at least for as long as I've been here. Um, it seems to have, I'll say, ramped up a little bit in the last couple of years with complaints about people using some of the stub streets. Mostly the complaints come from within the residential neighborhoods where people are using them for more longer term parking or parking odd vehicles, trailers or whatever in these. I I don't want to call it a dead end street. It's a future street connection stub that's been put in to connect future residential areas to existing. Most of these we've handled on a case by case basis. We've had a number of different citations written. Um, sometimes it's blocking a sidewalk. Sometimes it is overturned parking from parking a vehicle longer than seventy two hours or an unattached trailer for longer than twelve hours working with residents, but it's something that continues to occur and reoccur in some areas. Um, we've had some discussions between John and and the mayor and I and kind of how do we want to deal with this as these things continue to come up and a few thoughts came up that wanted to to run by the board. Um, and our thought was in these stub streets to perhaps enact an ordinance to limit overnight parking. So people could use them on a daily basis during the day, but we wouldn't allow overnight parking. Um, as I kind of looked in and researched, okay, what are our communities around us do? Um, when we talk about no overnight parking, the majority of communities around us do have limits actually on most, if not all of their residential streets for prohibiting overnight parking. We haven't talked about doing that overall, but just in these stub connection streets or dead end areas. Um, and so I would look at it and I would propose kind of if the board were to decide to do this, we would probably look at like a two to six AM time period where it would be prohibited, where nobody could park on those streets. In discussing how do we do this? How do we look at it? Um, what do we allow for exemptions? In my time at Oswego, before I got here, we have had and they still currently have a overnight parking prohibition. No parking two AM to six AM. Some of the things that we encountered were obviously we we kind of put in some general timeframes around holidays where people could just park overnight because people would have extended guest periods of stay and needed additional parking. Um, we had a a time by time exemption where they can call in and get it what we would call a temporary exemption. If somebody's getting their driveway seal coated, they're getting a driveway repaired. They've got some other big project going on. A home remodeling project where they may need a dumpster on their driveway taking up space or something along those lines that we would need to have a system to account for and allow for. So those are all things we've kind of talked about. I have dealt with those in the past. There's a couple of different areas where we could accommodate those things if the board were to decide to do this. I just wanted to, you know, put that out in the the front that we've already kind of talked about those and looked at them. Obviously, there would be a cost associated with this. Um, we would have to post it. Um, if we pass an ordinance, we need to post the signs. I looked at our current map and also for the Lennar project, looked at what would we be looking at? In grand total, if we were to consider all of them, it would be about thirty locations. And I counted up existing in residential areas and the old residential areas and in our commercial areas, just to say if we did this across the board, we'd be looking at about thirty locations that would need signs posted. Um, I didn't physically go out and look at each individual location, but I knew no, and some of them just from a cursory drive around. We have some of the like the red diamond signs in the ends of some of these. We could put a no parking sign on one of those. Others, we have no signage posted. We'd have to put a sign and a post up and a couple of longer ones. We might need a sign on each side of the street. Uh, because there would be the, you know, possibility of somebody um, coming out of a driveway further down, uh, that they might need to be able to say, okay, they saw that sign. Um, so that's kind of a good general overview of it. I wanted to get some feedback and have some discussion. Do we want to pursue this? Do we want to look at it further and come back with a proposed ordinance? And a hard harder line cost of, you know, what's it going to cost us for these signs and posts in these different locations? Depending on how the board might decide to look at this.
All right, thoughts, everyone? Anyone have any thoughts?
I'm I'm curious in your memo, you say that we've seen an increase in use of the streets. Um, how much of an increase? How how much of a nuisance is this?
I mean, it varies from time of year to time of year. Uh, we have um, seen it in different times of the months, um, around holidays and, you know, sometimes in the summertime with people that get additional guests, maybe visitors or whatever. Um, I I will say the most frequent complaints are in the BlackBerry Creek neighborhood areas. Um, the stub streets off of BlackBerry Creek Drive seem to be a popular place for people to be parking. Um, and then a couple of the other stub streets for future connections within the subdivision itself. Um, where we get people that will um, park their cars or visitors' cars and as I said, or trailers or whatever that they'll park there. Um, and it's more or less a recurring issue with it. Over the course of the last two years, we with an unscientific aspect, I'll just say, going from memory, we've been dealing with more in the last two years than we had the previous couple of years that I have been here at least.
In a given month, how many times? You know, or in in a given year or six months, do you? How many complaints do you get?
Um, it varies. And we've got a couple of streets where we might get a couple of complaints, uh, you know, in a week and then or several complaints within a month. We could go a couple of months with no complaints and then somebody starts parking again. Um, you know, we've dealt with a few specific residents. Um, but then what we have seen is sometimes people are coming in from a couple of blocks away because, okay, we know there's a street there. We want to park a car for a couple of days, don't have it out in front of our own house. Um, and they'll utilize those stub streets for that.
Chief, so are these vehicles, I mean, like that are just sitting here not moving for days and days?
Sometimes. And as I said, we've dealt with them on on different levels. Uh, we do have a seventy two hour parking provision, which if a vehicle is parked in excess of seventy two hours, we can cite it. Um, a couple of them, they blocked crosswalks where we actually have a sidewalk that goes across there where they block. We have cited them. We have tried to contact it. You know, if it's a local resident, we have better success. If it's a an out of area vehicle, an out of state vehicle, sometimes we're at a loss. We've we've resorted to, you know, ticketing a few of those in the past. But again, this is something that I know we get calls on. I know the mayor has gotten calls on it and has gotten complaints. So we wanted to bring it up. Do we want to consider something more long term? Um, we would need to change and update the ordinance anytime any of those stub streets wind up being connected to a future connection street. We would eliminate one and then probably add another one or two from a a connecting subdivision as growth does continue. So it it would need to be a fluent document. Um, in those regards, we'd have to do a review on it anytime we you know, had a new section of, you know, Elburn Station open up where a street connection is made or you know, when somebody connects to the Lennar property perhaps in the future. Um, you know, or any of our other areas where we have these, it it would have to be changed and updated as that goes, but um, just looking at, do we want to look at something on a more permanent basis to prohibit those longer term or overnight parkings in those stubs? You know, let people use it if they legally park there and and we still would have to cite them if they block a sidewalk. Um, a crosswalk perhaps, but leave them available for daytime parking, but not just having people deciding, oh, I'll put my car there for the next day or two or five.
So are these junk cars that people are parking there?
No, generally they're not junk cars. They they are definitely cars that are, you know, they don't need a junk vehicle ordinance requirement at all from what we have seen. Um, these are cars that maybe for whatever reason, people are just parking there. They have a longer term guest. They want some extra space, maybe a car that they don't use all the time. Um, or as I said, also trailers, whether it be, uh, we've had some cargo trailers, a a few boat trailers and a few small RV trailers as well that people in neighborhoods will, oh, I'm going to bring it home. I don't want to sit in my driveway. I'll park it down in the stub street because I'm going to be using it in the next couple of days or getting it ready for the season or cleaning it out or, you know, well, I'm going to be going out on the boat two or three times in the next couple of weeks, so I don't want to take it back to my normal storage location. I'll just leave it in the stuff.
Yeah, I I think we probably need to address it. I noticed this year more, um, RVs, you know, whether people were having getting one and keeping it in their driveway in case a family member got COVID and put them out in the RV. I don't know, but you know, I've kind of thought in a driveway, sure, but I think it's a little much parked and not moving on a street. Um, I mean, you you can't do that in town. I don't think it's appropriate.
Tractor trailer rig, somebody had their the tractor trailer piece sitting there for several weeks, came and went, but it was, you know, using a substrate as a tractor trailer parking.
Yeah, that was last winter.
Seemed to be a big one. Um, people park their work trucks if they don't need them for a week or two and it just sits. Uh, there's one over here again. And what I always call North settler, but it's not, but it's been there since Friday. Um, and it's still there today. So it's certainly met the seventy two hour rule and and and. But, you know, it's it's pretty regular and I I get calls two or three times a month, probably on cars. And it's typically in BlackBerry, but it's, you know, that's where the most stub streets are right now. You know, on Anderson Road, the chief, when we talked about this, you know, we we do get some semi trailers that park overnight on the Anderson Road stub outs up at Hicks because they're going in to unload the next morning. So they need a place to to overnight now. I don't see that as a big issue because there's really nobody there. There's no traffic or people or there's nothing they're really interfering with, but I I think in the residential areas and and that will eventually become residential, but I think in the residential areas where we should take some sort of stance and get some kind of signage out or something, whether it's an overnight parking or something.
I guess I didn't. I didn't realize as you were talking about this, that it was people who um, might live a uh, you know, or be a not next. So it's not the house next to the stub. It's people who live away from the stub who are utilizing that stub.
Right. And then it's the people that live near the stub that are like, why do I have to look at this work truck all the time? Or why do I have to look at this deserted trailer or whatever?
Right. And what is the HO in BlackBerry Creek? What is the HOA standard stand on these vehicles?
There are different, they can only govern parking in your driveway. They can't do anything about the streets because those obviously are ours. But there are rules in different areas about work trucks and driveways, and it varies from plat to plat depending how it was platted. We have thirteen different sets of covenants.
Wow.
Because they were all refiled with each new plat. And some allow work trucks, some don't. Some allow rentals, some don't. There's a lot of mix up there, but the streets are ours to control, not the HOA. So.
Okay.
And just just to make it clear to the board too, we cannot enforce HOA covenants and restrictions. Uh, we can enforce village ordinances and state laws. I I've had a couple of conversations with a few of the neighbors in there and had to explain that too, because they they want to know why we're not out enforcing them because we can't.
Well, it seems like it's it seems like, yes, something needs to needs to happen. Um, you know, certainly I agree with you, Sue. I think there's more incidents of it seems like, yeah, I see more RVs around town. And part of that is with COVID, there's been such an increase in people buying RVs. It's the new way of occasion with COVID. Um, you know, you're taking your hotel along with you with your with your vehicle. So um, RV is is certainly very, very popular. We have, we're going to have more issues and I think that goes right along with boating or whatever else and you know, so.
Have we had problems with snow removal too?
It does pose a different problem. We we did talk to Phil a little bit about this as well. Um, and in the winter months, of course, the the snow parking ordinance pretty much supersedes anything that we would do anyway. Uh, I would even say that even if we gave somebody a a special, uh, you know, a temporary exception exemption to this rule, it would still be superseded by, look, if we get snow, you got to find another place for your vehicle because we need to get the streets plowed. And in some of these stub streets, it is a place for public works to push snow.
Right.
Um, at the dead end to clear some other areas. Uh, they do, I know, try to clear, especially if there's like a fire hydrant in the area. They want to make sure they have a clear path so the fire department can have access to that hydrant if they do need it. So, yeah, that that is a another concern with it, but it that aspect hasn't been a huge concern. And we deal with the snow parking ordinance generally with tickets as well. That's a separate one.
Right. I just saying there's still, there's an additional public safety issue, especially when people think, oh, it's a stub. There's no access going through it. It's not a big deal. Well, it is a big deal.
And especially if public works does plow snow up around it, then it becomes a bigger issue for them to try to get it out of there and remediate the situation if they've got snow piled in and and around it.
Yeah, and I've seen that. They, you know, with people that park for the two inches that, you know, they're the ones that call and complain, can you come help dig out my car? You know, because he plowed it in. But anyway, so what do we think? No overnight parking, just in residential areas? Or do we want to do something a little more or less restrictive? Uh, all stubs, just residential stubs?
I think we should do a referendum to see what the people think. No, I'm joking. I like I like the ideas.
Signs.
I like scientific study. I think I like the idea of overnight, no overnight parking. scientific study. Um, I think I like the idea of overnight, no overnight parking. And start there and do it just for residential because I think commercials are different. Animal in the sense of people having trucks waiting to to get into a site that might be a safer place to put them than on the roads. You know, for for commercial purposes, just my thought.
And and for those commercial purposes, most of the feedback that I do get from primarily the midnight shift officers that answer those calls or or check on those. It's a lot of the deliveries in some of our business parks where the drivers do get there early. They're they're getting their sleep hours in because they're they're at their hours. They need to get their sleep time. And some of those building areas just don't allow for a a semi to be parked in there. Or they have to leave room for the the employees to be able to get in the morning before they can back into a delivery bay, especially in some of the smaller locations. Uh, the smaller site sizes. So uh, we do get them where they'll park in the actual business they're delivering to, but a lot of times those are the ones that we are finding on those stubs along uh Anderson where they'll pull in there for the night uh to get their sleep hours in because they got there early. Um, a- and as the mayor said, tho- those don't really pose much of a concern for us and those are pretty adequate for them to get well off the road and and they're there and gone. Um, they're not staying there for extended periods of time. We haven't seen that problem there.
Nick, do you have a list? You said you had thirty of them. Do you have a list of all the locations you looked at?
You know, I I didn't make a name list of them. I just literally looked at our our map on the wall here and just started counting how many we had. Um, and I came look, I think it was like twenty-eight or twenty-nine. Um, and I believe we have one or two new ones coming in in Lennar. So I just figured, you know, around about guess was thirty. That was total. Um, and I even looked at the, you know, the old sections of town where we had uh a dead end or a stub street that was there. Um, and included those in it. So uh, we'll do a more refined search, kind of narrow it down. Um, bring it back with specific locations and get some uh language in. Sounds like it looks like it'll be a no overnight parking. Um, I would suggest two AM to six AM. That's kind of the general consensus. It's a little around the board. Some towns are one to five, some are one to six. Two to six is more or less the the majority of them. If we stay consistent with what the majority of them are, if the board does want to consider something different, I'm certainly open to that. Um, but that's what I'd suggest to start with. It'll just give us an easy way to post it and then enforce it without having to say, well, you know, you're over twelve hours on an unattached trailer. No, you got seventy-two hours on a vehicle. And then exactly how many hours has your vehicle been here? Um, when was the last time we chalked the tire or marked the location or um, has the vehicle actually moved but been parked back in substantially the same place? And we face that argument from people as well. Sometimes, hey, I drove it around the block. I moved it. I just parked it back in the same spot.
Yep.
So um, it's an easy way to then have the midnight shift do that enforcement between those set hours.
Everybody agree with that? Anybody disagree with that? Sounds like most everybody's in favor. So we're looking at no overnight parking on residential stubs.
Okay, we'll move forward with that. Get something brought back to the board more specific uh for future consideration. I I guess we'll review it at a cow and then it can go to a a regular village board meeting for approval after we look at the the more refined uh product.
Okay. Sounds like a plan.
All right.
All right. Um, a- on other business, I wanted to bring up the ponds real quick. Um, we've, I've had conversations with John and with um with Bill on this. And I think there may still be some ongoing research. But I think th- this this topic has come up almost every year that I've been on the board and and been mayor, you know, what what do we do about the ponds and people using them? I know there's some um, some fishing through the state conservation laws that say if you have a valid fishing license, you can fish on any waterway in Illinois. So that's ice fishermen are are probably nothing, you know, nothing that we can do anything about, but we own the ponds. Um, you know, and the the questions I put to Bill were what what's our liability? If we don't have a sign, if we do have a sign, I've done some research on it. I I've found that some areas, some towns will designate their ponds as part of their park district uh because it changes the insurance coverage. Uh, makes it a little different uh and it allows for the insurance coverage, I guess. You know, do we go, you know, years ago, we talked about um, flag systems and and, you know, there there's certain depths, you know, three inches is okay to be on, three inches or more. Um, you know, over twelve inches, you can drive a truck down it, but I don't think we'll have that issue. So there's a lot of things that go into making ponds safe for use by the general public. Or if we don't want anybody to use it, we could just put signs up, you know, no skating, no whatever, you know, I'm not inclined to to say that's the way we go, but so I I think we're getting to the point as we get bigger, we've got to make some decision as a village of where we stand, you know, and that's got to be based on, you know, Bill's input as the village attorney and and maybe even taking a look at what other communities do. I've looked at some other towns. Batavia puts a flag up in their little skating area down by their village hall. Um, but I think that's the only one in town that people are allowed to skate on, and I don't know how many other ponds there are in Batavia, to be honest with you, but so um, you know, you heard the email that we got earlier. So the question is to the board, uh, how do you want to proceed? And I don't know, Bill, if you've got some input at this point, um, feel free to jump in and and, you know, if the board is inclined to say stay off of it, fine, then we need to go down that route. But if it's, we want to make those facilities available for folks to use in the winter, I I know we've had plenty of frozen weather. I know the ice fishermen are out on several ponds right now, so I'm sure the ice is more than three inches thick. Um, so why not let people who skate and play hockey enjoy it when it's safe? Uh, my opinion, but board, it's it's open discussion.
Yeah, I kind of feel like families have been using it for years. It would be sad to take that away from them, but safety is an issue. So, yeah, if there's a way we could make sure that it's safe for them to do it, that's what we should do.
Bill, have you had a chance to look into any of that yet or?
Uh, not on, not on a substantial, not with a substantial period of time. I mean, you got to understand that with village-owned ponds, regardless of policy and or signs or lack of signs, if something bad happens, the village will get sued. Um, it's just a target sign, not no sign. Um, prohibit, allow it, anything else.
That's amazing.
In our litigation culture, you're gonna get sued. So uh, insurance is a premium um to ensure over potentially catastrophic catastrophic event that could lead to not not only the defense of an action, but also potential liability. But apparently the chief sent us an email. There are inconsistent positions taken by municipalities all around us. Some will place signs, some there's none. Um, and again, we get, we got to separate between what what is village-owned and controlled and what is not village-owned and controlled. Um, if there is any ponds that are HOA-controlled, would John, I think John say no. Um, I mean, if we can eliminate that, I think, I think coming up with a policy is important. Um, and then follow through with it. I mean, if if there's going to be an allowance of certain acts on on ownership of of village ponds, I think that assumes some degree of of uh either maintenance and or uh, you know, and watching over it. Um, there's got to be eyes on your property if you're allowing the general public to use it. Um, so I think that that brings up an in an increased cost associated with with watching over your public spaces.
I would also um just add to, you know, as we consider this, the to think um if the village were going to take a a stance on, you know, placing flags or anything like that, that's also staff time. Um, and from us on the enforcement aspect of it, because obviously we we at the police department would be tasked with enforcing if we red flagged, green flagged, or whatever, you're gonna have to have somebody out there measuring the ice on a regular basis, posting it. Um, and, you know, from what we have garnered from the conservation officers that we've talked to as was brought up, somebody that goes out and says, I'm ice fishing, we would have to still allow it because they're allowed with a legal um fishing license or somebody that meets the exceptions to a legal fishing license that they don't have to have it, which is juveniles um in general, don't have to have a fishing license. If they say, hey, I'm gonna go out on the pond and fish per the Conservation Department, Illinois Conservation Police, we could not cite them for being on there. Now, if they happen to skate out to and back and forth from their fishing hole or while they're watching their fishing line, that has been brought up to us by Conservation Police as something that they have seen and deal with. And in general, the courts have ruled in favor of the conservation law and said, well, if they're minding their fishing pole and they have a line in the water, whether they're skating around it or not, they're fishing, they're allowed. Just keep that in mind as we talk about that. I know that's kind of an extreme, but Conservation Police brought that to our attention as we discussed this with them.
I I wonder what the Forest Reserve does, you know, because they've got ponds all over. Is there?
So we're we're part of Pderma, the the insurance company that provides for park districts that Jeff was just talking about, like park districts have a different uh insurance. So so the Forest was the Forest was Forest Reserve does as well. And so we're, we go through Pderma to ensure everything that we own. So um, we allow fishing and all those activities. I know personally, I grew up in northwest suburbs and pond fishing, pond skating, uh pond sledding was all part of life and uh I can tell you, I was one of them that fell into this height of in my wa- in the water and got out when I was on thin ice. And so uh, having had that experience and walking five blocks back home, freezing your butt off because you dropped in this pond was a life experience for me that I don't want to repeat. Um, but I I would say the parents need to take some responsibility and I do not have a problem with ice skating on a pond, an ice pond, playing hockey, doing all those kind of things. And I I don't think it should be the village's responsibility to police all these ponds when we've got so many other things we have to do. And the flagging system, I just we're talking about budget stuff and how how are we doing the flagging thing? That to me just seems you know, something like a park district would do or something, you know, that that has a bigger staff and does it.
Yeah, no, I I grew up around the Cook County Forest Reserve and, you know, it was kind of the same experience. You went out to the ponds and you skated or you fished or you you know, horsed around, whatever you did, but.
The other thing I would say too is the ponds that we've got built probably most of the new one, well, I I would imagine all the ones, they all have safety shelves. There's a least a ten to fifteen foot shelf that goes out at a shallow grade, right? And then it gets deeper beyond that point. So there there is the opportunity. And I can tell you that wasn't the way the ponds were built up in Palatine, but that's the way they're built now. That causes a whole nother maintenance issue as as Phil just went out and cleaned some up recently, so. But that safety shelf is there for people. If they do, something bad happens, they're able to crawl out or walk out on that she- she- safety shelf.
Except for Lake Wilson.
Yeah, that one's a little different. And that posted, no fishing, no nothing.
Right, yeah, yeah, that one's a little bit deeper. It swallows suburbans. Um, so.
Like people named Wilson.
That's why it's named Wilson. That's right. And for those that haven't heard that story, ping me and I'll let you, I'll give you the whole story. Uh, anyway, so what do we want to do? Do we want to have Bill continue a little more research into those? See what makes sense? Should we? I mean, I think we should at least have some sort of policy that gives the chief, if we should decide to do something, you know, there's an ordinance in place that they've got something they can enforce. I agree. I don't, I I think I think it's a park district's responsibility to to do flagging or whatever the case, take ice samples or what have you, depth samples. And I that could get into a whole part-time job in the winter. Hey, Dan, what are you doing right now?
Is there, is there any kind of um uh uh protection by even posting ponds as swim or skate or fish at your own risk?
While it helps with the argument over liability, even with a sign, Pat, and something bad happens, the village is gonna get sued. Whether or not the ultimate liability rests on the village's shoulders, even with a sign, it helps, obviously, if if you're providing some sort of warning to the potential user because they become a trespasser if they're if they're violating the warning. Um, but uh there would still be an attorney out there that's gonna take the case and point at least one of the fingers at the village for ultimate liability. So that's why this is not a this is what not a clear yes or no answer. And that's why there's uh how different municipalities handle it different ways. Because uh, there's not one way to deal with, deal with this.
But I I think not doing nothing is not the way to deal with it. I think we've got to get down some sort of path here.
Can we see what some other area municipalities do or what kind of regulations or ordinances that they've done?
Absolutely. Right, John?
I was gonna look to Nick to do that.
We can, we can look at it. Yeah. Um, we actually tried to do, I I'll I'll say an unscientific study. Um, our our clerks belong to our our police records uh specialists, belong to a group. Um, we did send out an email. Unfortunately, we didn't get a lot of response. I can have Hillary send another one out. It's a really good quick look at this. We, from the responses we got, it was literally split fifty-fifty between eight um entities that posted it for, you know, no swimming, no skating, no whatever, and entities that did nothing and just let it be. So uh, but we had a low response. We can look into it further um and bring some more information back. Um, and or we can physically reach out to multiple different agencies a- and we can go ahead and do it from the police department aspect because obviously it'll be an enforcement issue. It's gonna be given to us if we do post this uh to go along. Um, we can get that done and um send that out and get some more information. Um, perhaps have some better numbers by the next board meeting to discuss it the next cow.
Yeah. Uh, that to me, that sounds like a public works thing since he's not here, but.
Well, it'll, hey, it'll be signs out of his budget, so we are gonna hear about that. Or at least I know I will, because every time I say something, Phil rolls his eyes. Well, that's gonna cost me a sign.
All right. So Nick, if you'll continue on your research path and Bill, if you'll take a little deeper dive into it to see what uh, you know, and and maybe even Doug, from your perspective, what is our liability insurance cover us on this? You know, if something happens, God forbid. Um, you you know, it it's our pond and we, if we've done something or haven't done anything, what's our insurance carrier gonna say? And let's come up with a plan, you know, with all the input from from all these different views of it and and angles and board can make a decision on.
Hey, John, I I think that the full-size ice rink that I want put right in the middle of Heritage Park would keep everybody off the ponds. Dan, I'd like to think that you were correct, but I know better.
But I tried. Nice try, Dan. There is supposed to be an ice skating rink in the new park at uh at Elburn Station. You know, it's uh, there's one of those drawings says ice skating pond or rain.
Four or five inches thick uh or deep. And and for those of you who don't know, Dan sent me a link to eBay for the Zamboni. Um, it was only about thirteen thousand dollars and uh we would have to go to Winnipeg to go get it. So we'll
Volunteered.
Once the border's open, we'll we'll be back.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for the conversation. All right, well, thank you, everybody, for the conversation on ponds, I think we we've got a little bit of a plan to move forward here to come up with. Something for the village that we, uh, you know, we don't just. You know, scratch our heads and say we've got nothing, right? All right, any other business to come before the board? Uh, or the committee, the whole, is there a motion to adjourn then?
Also.
Moved by trustee Gruberek, second by trustee Philek, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, we are adjourned, thank you all for a good night's worth of work.